Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statute, the request to be heard form is at the front of the doorway. According to policy, a request to be heard form must be given to the Board Secretary in order to be heard at this meeting. The meeting will begin at 5:33 PM. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statute, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. The purpose of this meeting is to receive an update on the facility's master plan from Stakeholder Engagement and Communication Services from Jacobs. Roll call, please.
Fay.
Here.
Godding.
Here.
America.
Here.
Scanlon.
Present.
Snow.
Underwood.
Here.
Vargas.
Present.
Wayne.
Present.
Williams. Seven present.
Any public comments, Mr. Ray? First, we have Lisa Carlson. Lisa Carlson? I feel like saying, "Come on down, you're the best." Price is Right, okay. Never mind. Please state your name, last name, your address, and you'll have five minutes, and Mr. Ray will let you know when there's one minute, 30 seconds, and then 10 seconds left.
Okay. Lisa Carlson. Address is 6010 North 166th Street. What else, Justin? I'm not sure. Is that it? Okay. Actually, I thought we would be able to have public comment after the discussion that you guys are having today, so I'm not sure if I'm maybe preemptively going to give some comments, but I just wanted to say that I am the parent of two children in OPS. I always find it's important to maybe note that I actually opt my kids in to the school district for certain reasons, and I feel very strongly that instead of escaping some of the problems that I think Northwest parents have with the school district, I'm trying to be part of the solution. And I've attended the task force meetings on the bond issues. I've headed up PTOs for Davis New Middle School, and I've defended the school district in any possible way I possibly can. To be honest with you, I'm kind of tired of continuing to fight when I feel like I'm not sure the Northwest sector of parents are being listened to, and it's getting harder and harder every year when my kids go back to school and they're -- all of their friends are leaving. I just asked my daughter today, "Hey, Wiz, is so-and-so in your class?" And she said, "No, they're not at the school anymore." And I said, "Well, did -- where did they go?" And she said, "They went to Millard." And every year that happens. So I feel very strongly that the Board right now is faced with a critical decision, I believe, is going to decide the fate of the school district. You've either got to decide to remain a diverse school district that meets the needs of children from all socioeconomic backgrounds, or you're going to focus your efforts on what seems to be a very growing and overwhelming majority of students that do come from a lower socioeconomic families, and I do feel like they have a lot of needs as well. But right now, the parents in Northwest Omaha do not feel that their children's needs are being met. We feel very strongly that a need for a new high school in West Omaha is critical to the long-term viability of the school district. If the building does not get built, I don't think you're going to have any support for any bond issue out of parents from our sector. And in fact, if you drive down the streets of most of our neighborhoods, there are houses for sale, and the people that are buying those houses tend to be retired couples with no kids. And I'm sure I don't have to tell you that retired couples with no kids do not like to have bonds passed, and they don't like to pay higher taxes. When parents opt their children out, even in elementary school, you don't even have a chance to sell them on the high schools that you currently have. The two kids that just opted out with my kid's class, they'll never even visit one of your magnet schools. You'll never get them anywhere because they've already opted out in third grade or earlier. So -- and I know I was speaking to another parent who said that in my attendance area, it is closer for our kids to get to Millard South by passing Millard North and a couple of other high schools than it is for us to get to Northwest High School, which is our attendance high school or our home attendance area. So I know that there's always this thought, we should be more concerned about the students that are in our district as opposed to the ones that leave, but I really do feel like that's fundamentally flawed at this point. I feel like there's so many people that are leaving the district because their needs are not being met, and I felt compelled to at least come here tonight to vocalize my opinion one last time, to fight for the school district that, again, I believe I grew up in, I taught in, I choose to send my kids to despite the fact that I live in Bennington, where everybody else seems to want to go.
One minute.
And I just hope that you will consider very strongly that where you may not hear it in your communities, if you come out west and you sit through a ballgame, or you sit through a dance recital, or if you're like me and you have somebody that you work with who tells you, "I love that neighborhood, but I can't send my kids to an OPS school," it's very, very hard. And it's hard for our kids to hear that message, and I feel like in Northwest Omaha, and I know that a lot of the parents are here tonight behind me, we're fighting this fight every day. So I hope that you will take that into consideration as you're making issue or decisions on this bond. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Pfaff.
Hello.
Please state your -- yeah, name, address, and you'll have five minutes.
All right. My name is Suzy or Suzanne Pfaff. You did good on the last name. Three Fs is kind of tough sometimes. I live at 14719 Kansas Ave, and I have a son who is attending the beautiful new building of Davis Elementary. He grew up at Saddle Brook Elementary from the first day that those doors opened, and I've been heavily involved with that school through the PTA and PTO and look forward to continuing that tradition at Davis Middle School. I'm here -- I want to reiterate some of the things that Lisa said. It is a battle for OPS parents to continue to preach the engagement of OPS, the wonderful qualities that OPS offers, the amazing opportunities. There are so many out there, but unfortunately, we have such a negative opinion of OPS and parents that they have it before their kids get to elementary school. They have it because some of the buildings are run down, because technology is an issue. They have it because there's not a good high school where -- or there's not a high school where they feel that their kids will get the attention that they need, both in the number of students. You know, you hear Burke is so overcrowded, it's hard to be an individual there. Same time, the marketing of Northwest High School has -- there's been no positive push behind it that gets to the parents. I have always just assumed that my son would go to OPS. We love the experience that we've had, the engagement, the quality of teachers is incredible. I'm very passionate about the school, but this last year, we thought, "Well, we'll move to a little bit of a bigger house. We need a little bit more space. You know, we need a better backyard to play baseball in." And when we were doing our market analysis, the fact that we were a school that lined up to Northwest High School brought down the value of our house. And I just -- I feel that that's sad. I feel like there's so many more positive things that giving the buildings a spruce up by increasing the technology, increasing the safety of the schools by the things that this bond will offer will not only benefit us as parents and the students that are there and the teachers and the staff, but it also improves the communities around it. Well, you'll see, you know, home values increase, and that will bring in the taxes and help fund things to where they are at. Lots of people, just like Lisa said, you know, there are three kids for -- or three families from Cameron's fifth grade class that left OPS for places like Millard and for Elkhorn. Or -- and there are families that are driving their kids 30, 40 minutes to school just because that's the school that they got into, because they don't want to go to Northwest. That's my biggest concern, and OPS has a lot of things to offer, but Lisa's 100% right. When a child or a family opts out in second, third grade, sometimes even earlier, then they're never going to see the wonderful things that OPS has to offer. They're never going to see the magnet schools, the different programs. I am so excited about the law program that's involved at Northwest High School. I think it's amazing, but who knows about that? I had no clue that that was even an option until just this last year because the publicity around OPS schools is never positive. There are so many great things that are happening. There's great things at Benson. The staff that teaches there is incredible.
One minute.
But sometimes, we're so focused on the negative side of OPS because the funds aren't there to focus on the positive, to make the buildings beautiful, to really bring the public in and engage the citizens of Omaha around the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. At this juncture, any more public comment?
No, sir.
At this juncture, we'll move to information item E1A, Facility Master Plan Update and Stakeholder Engagement and Communication Services with Jacobs. Mr. Evans, you have any opening comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd just like to publicly acknowledge all the effort and energy this school board has put into not only what we're talking about today, but really in the last 13, 14 months, over a year, you've worked on a strategic plan that involved extensive community engagement, extensive focus groups, surveys that led to the adoption of a very aggressive plan with significant outcomes. And part of that plan also was to come back to the community and also look at facilities and also look at safety needs that might be included in our facilities. And so now, on the heels of all the energy and effort you put into that work, you then started six months ago, at approximately March 3, to work with architectural firms to identify our facility needs and to begin processing that through not only community groups, not only surveys, but continual input, much like tonight where we've got citizens that have shared with each board member individually as well as in groups like tonight. And so I want to start off by saying that, that this board has done an incredible job of trying to analyze in a thorough fashion something that needed to be looked at. And I also wanted to couch that with the reality that we've not had this conversation for 15 years. We have not had a bond issue. We've not had an opportunity to talk about with our citizens, with our community, for 15 years. So part of the difficulty of the conversation that the Board has had over the last six months, part of the difficulty with the conversation you're having tonight is that we're trying to fill in the gap of a 15-year span of time, and that's pretty challenging. That's pretty challenging because the needs grew over those 15 years, not only because of enrollment growth, but because inherently, you're going to have facility needs that just weren't met over those 15 years. So that's what you've been struggling with, and you've done an admirable job of trying to figure out, how can we do that? How can we meet these needs? And we've come back with many options and alternatives of ways to look at that that would satisfy as many of those needs as possible and still have the support of our community. So tonight, we have asked Jacobs to come before you and present another alternative and another idea to think about and to look at. And with that, I'd like to ask Jacobs then to present to the Board unless, Mr. President, you want to add additional comments. But again, I want the community to know the energy and effort that this board, this volunteer board, has put into this effort.
Jacobs, you can go ahead and start your presentation at this time.
All right. Board President Wayne, members of the Board, Superintendent Evans, District Staff, thank you for having us back. We're here to talk about some of the alternatives and the kind of the current plan as we've been asked to look at it. What we're going to talk about tonight, just a quick agenda, is the current recommended plan based on the continued input that we've been receiving. Talk about some of the next steps and then open the floor to any questions that you might have for us. So the current recommended plan, we've been asked to look at a phased facilities capital plan rather than a single plan as we have previously been discussing. What this plan does is, as Superintendent Evans discussed, incorporates the community input, takes into account the steering committee input, extensive work by district staff as well as the various meetings and discussions we've had with all of the board members. This plan continues to address the priority deficiencies that have been identified, starting with the safety and security, including the renovation of several of the open plan schools that are in the district, adds central air conditioning to all of the buildings that currently do not have central air conditioning, as well as improves technology across the district in all of the facilities. In addition, the bond or the facilities plan improves program delivery in the area of technology, career and technical education, early childhood education is addressed, as well as alternative education programs. And in addition, we do have plans to address additional enrollment and capacity needs into the future, looking at some of the overutilized facilities as well as decreasing some of the district opt-out enrollment that is currently occurring. So in the phased facilities capital plan that we've been asked to bring forth, we're looking at sort of a two-phase approach. Phase one continues to address the three categories of work that have previously been identified. The first is the fire, life, safety, security, and technology. Secondly, we have capital improvements, and those capital improvements are to the schools that have the, again, do not have the central air conditioning, as well as the high facilities condition index, which is an indicator, relative indicator of school condition, and then also includes land as well as planning and design for increased capacity for several schools out into the future. The focus for the second phase would then be to construct several of the schools that have been identified for increased capacity as well as additional capital improvements for the next tier of schools that have that sort of that second level of need based on their facilities conditions index. So the first category for phase one is the fire, life, safety, security, and technology. This should look very familiar. This is essentially the same list with a few minor modifications that you've seen the last couple of times. It goes through the elementary schools, $28 million for fire and life safety identified there, $33 million, 33.7 million for the open plan schools at Franklin, Jocelyn, Lothrup, and Sunny Slope, and then also addresses fire and life safety needs at all of the middle schools as well as the high schools at approximately $42 million between those two. For the technology, kind of spread across all of the schools, $12 million at the elementary level, six and a half at the middle school, and 7.8 million at the high schools. The second category that we had identified for phase one is the capital improvements, renovations, as well as replacements. At the elementary, you can see we've got replacements for four schools, Bell Ryan, Columbian, Western Hills, and Yates. Capital improvements and renovations for Boyd, Crest Ridge, Dodge, Florence Gilder, Hartman, Indian Hill, Oak Valley, and Ponca. That number is increased, again, looking at the schools without central air conditioning. That's one of the changes that you have seen from last time, as well as additions at Boyd, Gilder, and Hartman to address additional capacity needs, approximately $134 million for that scope of work. At the middle school, capital improvements at Beveridge, Bryan, Hale, and Norris, as well as Beveridge and Norris receiving additions, again, to deal with the overcrowding and increased capacity needs there. And then finally, capital improvements at the high school level for Benson, Bryan, Burke, and Northwest, along with Career Center at Benson, and also includes relocation of some of the alternative programs at about 35 million. So that category is just under $260 million. And then for the increased capacity, we've identified the need to procure land for two elementary schools in the south, as well as procure land and do conceptual design for new high school in the west as well as in the south, with an identified need of approximately $30 million for that category of work. Looking at a phase two focus would be out likely in 2017 or 2018, depending on when the Board decided to go out for the second round of funding. The two main categories of work, the first category would be to construct facilities for the four sites that we identified previously, which would be the two elementaries in the south, a new high school in the west, a new high school in the south, as well as construction of a new middle school in the south, and that is on land that is currently owned by the district that is adjacent to Gateway Elementary. I want to make sure I had that one right. And then the second focus there would be, as I indicated earlier, additional capital improvements, and that would be to that sort of second tier of schools that have the second tier of facilities conditions index at two existing middle schools, nine existing elementary schools, and would sort of follow up with some of the capital improvements that we had identified and would hit all of the high schools and alternative programs. So when you look at those scopes of work, for phase one, the identified three categories of work is approximately $421 million. Again, you can see the breakdown which we went through previously. And when we look at the phase two focus, we've identified $173 million of new construction for the five schools discussed, as well as $204 million for the additional capital improvement The financial impact, which is based on information provided by Omaha Public Schools General Administration, it would be based on a phase one plan of approximately $421 million. The tax increase for $100,000 evaluation would be approximately $60. And at this point, this assumes no alternative funding in terms of private donations or any other sort of types of private funding that are out there. This would be just a straight $421 million bond if that's the direction that the Board decides to go. So for next steps and questions, the next steps would be to sort of finalize the plan and gain consensus around what would be in the plan. We are currently working with the district to, once the plan is finalized, to publish school-specific scopes of work as well as the potential cost impacts in some of the phasing, so that that information is more publicly available on a kind of a school-by-school basis, so people can understand what's in the plan in a more specific way. And then in terms of a milestone date, the intent would be to, if the decision is made to move forward with a bond initiative, to have that language to the election commission by the 29th of August. With that, I would open the floor to questions.
Questions, comments, concerns. Mrs. Fay.
Could you just, thank you very much. You presented that very clearly. Could you just, so the public knows, for phase one, what was the FCI that was used to make the determination for the capital improvements to the elementary schools?
I don't know that we had a specific magic number that we went down to and took everything above or everything below, because some of the --
Because of the air conditioning.
Because of the air conditioning, right.
Right, right.
But generally, I believe all of the schools above 60.
I was going to say, I think it's 60.
I think it was 60.
So, right.
Everything above 60 is included, and then the schools, the air conditioning.
Plus the air conditioning.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. America.
Okay. I think I already know the answer to this, but I want it publicly stated because I've gotten some questions today. During one of your previous presentations, you had showed us a potential for, based on the 680, the bond schedule of when we would need to actually be selling bonds for funds to do the projects. And so based on comparing that cash flow to how it would work under the tiered system of doing specifically with the high schools, sorry, I should have started with that.
Yep.
If we do the two-tiered, two-bond tier idea and do the design and land procurement first, and then do a second bond that assumably is passed for the actual construction, does that significantly change the timeline of building new high schools in South Omaha and Northwest Omaha?
Depending on the timing of a bond, no. The overall process for procuring land, designing, constructing, and occupying a high school is anywhere from a, depending on how quickly you can procure the land, anywhere from a five to a seven-year process. And so if you were to go out and procure land, do the design, the, in the ideal scenario, you would set up the bond and the program would be managed such that the intention would be to run a continuous process and have the funds available from the second bond issue, sort of in phase, if you will, so that when the construction documents are done and you're ready to go into construction, that those funds are available. So depending on the timing of the bond, there really wouldn't be an impact to the opening of a high school in the south or in the west. If there's a delay in a second bond, that might cause a one-year lag time, but it's certainly not going to cause a three- or four-year lag time like you might think it would based on a three- or four-year delay in that second tranche of funding, if you will.
Well, Ms. Underwood, followed by Mr. Vargas.
Thank you very much. So to me, the phase one is addressing the basics, kind of getting us caught up to maybe where our facilities should be from just a basic need standpoint. So for phase two, the plan for increased capacity, my question on that relates to the portables. Does that, in theory, remove the need for portables in all of our schools?
No.
Okay.
The -- it is going to significantly reduce the amount of portables needed in particularly the South Omaha schools where the two new elementaries are coming in, but it will not take out all of the portables. The previously discussed number that was in the $1.2 billion range that puts all of the additions on all of the schools, that's where you start getting into elimination of all of the portables. But it would represent a significant reduction in South Omaha. A new high school in the west would likely alleviate a lot of the portables that are at places like Burke and things like that, but I can't definitively tell you that it would eliminate all of the portable needs district-wide.
Mr. Vargas.
Thank you. Just had a follow-up question to Ms. America's question. So for the timeline change, you mentioned that it would vary depending on if we have the land, right? So for the one middle school in South Omaha that's slated in phase two and says on current district-owned land, can you explain sort of the rationale why it couldn't be part of phase one, given the significant overutilization we have in South Omaha as it is for many of our elementary schools, and imagining that there's a clear need for a middle school? We already have the land. Why couldn't we put it in phase, why wasn't it in phase one? Yeah?
Yep. Just to be clear, my answer to the question on timing was specifically related to the high schools, because I think that was your question.
Yeah. But you mentioned, I only brought it because you mentioned land being a factor, so I figured.
And so that is one factor, and it's a great benefit to the district already have that land and to be able to move forward with a project whenever you have the funding. The real reason that it wouldn't be included in phase one, as Superintendent Evans said, you know, we've had to prioritize and make decisions about where things, where things can be done and how they can be done, and so it purely is a matter of prioritization and where things go. For instance, Norris Middle School, I believe we have slated for an addition, that would start to help with some of that. So there's steps being taken in the interim that will help to alleviate some of that, but again, we can't solve all of the problems, you know, out of the gate in phase one. We would love to be able to. Unfortunately, we can't.
Yeah. I just bring it up because it sounded like if we have the land, there's a quicker timeline. For the other ones that don't have land, it seems like it will be in, for high schools, unaffected by sort of staggering these different -- unaffected by sort of staggering in these different phases if that were, if that were the scenario.
And and the, the other thing is, people tend to underestimate the amount of time that design and construction takes. If if this board said to us, Jacob, start managing a process to build a new middle school at at the Gateway site, you're looking at a minimum, you probably wouldn't open that if this is fourteen, that wouldn't even be open until August of two thousand and seventeen. By the time you take to design and construct and outfit that type of a building, nine to twelve months for design, couple of years, you know, twenty, twenty-four months for construction, you know, you're there at kind of a three-year timeframe. So the the planning and design and construction process always takes longer than than people feel like it, feel like it should.
Got it. No, that's awful. I'm just thinking of, because in three years, what utilization will look like for some of the elementary schools, that many of them at over a hundred and twenty percent utilization in South Omaha, and thinking about what, where they're going to feed into if kids want to stay in the area. Another question is around the capital improvements from Phase One. For the replacements, that one hundred and thirty-four million, the Bell Ryan, Colombian, Western Hill, and Yates, for the public, could you describe a little bit more around sort of the rationale for what, for these replacements in a little more detail for those different sites?
The the primary driver for, or how we tend to make a decision, again, at a kind of a macro level, there's always special circumstances that drive things, but the biggest driver for the replacement of a school tends to be a high facilities conditions index, which is, which is defined as the the cost to bring a school up to current standards versus the replacement value. And so that number starts to get into the sixty-five percent range and higher, that's when we start to make recommendations that replacement of the school should should occur rather than capital improvements and renovations. In 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 the case of Omaha Public Schools, the worst school on the list, I believe, was Bell Ryan at a point eight-two facility conditions index. I don't have all of them, but that one was was clearly the worst and really drives, you're putting good money after bad if you try and renovate some of those schools.
Yeah. That's really helpful. It's, I think it's helpful for everyone to know, the rationale behind that is grounded in the, that metric we're using for basically improving it. Is that the same, so you talked about Bell Ryan, is it the same for for the other four, relatively, that they're on the lower end of that?
Yes, that's, again, that's, generically, that's the the primary criteria there.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other, Ms. Mrs. Gadding?
Well, I want to thank you. I mean, I know that when we hired you, you guys are a nationally recognized firm and do a great job, so I appreciate the professional assistance that you've given to us as we've moved through this process. I also want to thank the community, all the members who attended the area meetings, the folks who served on the steering committee, because that was a significant amount of time that they spent, really the parents, the staff, and the community leaders from across the district, looking at data and spending time analyzing it. So I appreciate that, and I, personally, I recognize, and I think we all do, that fire and life safety, as well as technology upgrades, are critical to not only the safety of our kids, but also to their future academic achievements if we aren't providing the technology that we need. But when I think about the community and the comments that came back, they were really recommending that we work in our existing high schools and middle schools to take a look at some of those priorities, and those were some of the first things that were on their list to take a look at. And some of those things, we, and they also looked at elementary schools that you just mentioned that had significant needs, and some of those we were able to pair back earlier because we said, for instance, the, you know, the portables at both Bryan and at Burke would be alleviated through new construction at some point in the future. So I think that's important to note. But one of the things that I just can't ignore is the data that we previously looked at showed that currently in the Burke and Northwest attendance areas today, we have fifty-eight-hundred high school students. Burke is overcapacity, and Northwest is probably three to four hundred students from being in an ideal size, and I think is quickly headed there. I have a lot of confidence in Mr. Lee and a lot of confidence in the marketing he's gonna do, and so I have no doubt that Northwest will be full shortly. But that means that if Burke and Northwest are either overcapacity or full, we still have two thousand seats in the Burke and Northwest attendance area where we don't have seats available at neighborhood schools for students to attend. And last school year, a thousand or fifty percent of those students attended another learning community school. So that's tax dollars that we, or the state, is actually paying to those districts to educate our kids because we don't have a com, we can't accommodate them. And that's also true of seven hundred students in the Bryan and South attendance areas who went to other learning community schools. So in those two areas, we lost seventeen hundred students to other learning community schools, and we also lost students to private schools because that was the only place where they might have found a seat close by. And I think about South Omaha where we're currently overcapacity by seventeen hundred students today at our elementary buildings, and where we have at least one building with more portables than has classrooms. And it's, that that bothers me and troubles me deeply that those kids are going to school and probably starting lunch very, very early, or even, I have a child who's got lunch essentially right before he comes home from school. That's a tough thing to have happen for kids when they're trying to focus and and be focused. So I guess as I think about the recommendations that we had from both the community and as we've talked about it, I want to make sure that we're meeting the goals that we set in the strategic plan of retaining our students, because as you would hope Northwest would grow, although we heard from some of my parents tonight, that there's really no point in staying there because there's, the space just isn't going to be there, or the distance to travel is too far. I think that's a strategic plan objective that we set, that we should be thinking about. So I guess as I look at the plan to do this work, and I think about probably five years' worth of work there, I think we should maybe think about some of those existing issues, but pair that with planning for the future, because I think if we only try to solve the problems from the past that weren't addressed, and we don't conceivably think about planning for the future and retaining students, we're not really meeting the needs of every student every day in our district. So it's a struggle that I have, I, I, I struggle with the capacity issues in West Omaha, but I'm also deeply troubled by the capacity issues that we have in South Omaha that we may not be addressing through this particular phase. I understand that there's a Phase Two out there, and I would certainly hope that the taxpayers in three years would be ready to take on another big chunk, but I can't guarantee that to my taxpayers, and, and they represent, you know, fifteen percent of the real estate taxes within the Omaha Public Schools in Douglas County, and I need to make sure that we're addressing all those needs. I do appreciate that we're addressing Sunny Slope, one of the schools that does need to be replaced, and I, I think that's important. I do have a couple of questions on Burke. Are we addressing the cafeteria cafeteria needs for an expansion of cafeteria?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremy, at this point, we would not be addressing it. I know that some, some changes potentially in enrollment, patterns, and boundaries have been discussed there to alleviate some of the overcrowding, but at this point, we would not be expanding the cafeteria at Burke.
So I think if, if we're not addressing, making some boundary changes, or reducing the number of students who we take into Burke, I think it, I, I think it's critical, I, I just can't believe we're not going to address the cafeteria issues there. That's one of the reasons why we struggle. It's a very tiny cafeteria, and we're expecting twenty-some-hundred kids to eat there. I know we're, I know we're adding a gym, but we've got twelve portables as well sitting there, which is a tough thing for Burke, and so I, I, I'm, those things bother me. Thank you.
Mr. Scaner.
I think that this phased plan, although we're not able to get the one-point-one-billion dollars, and I think the phased plan allows us to address our current needs while planning for increased capacity. I think that's a responsible approach that we're taking, and we're going first out to address, what was it, four hundred and twenty-one million? I think that's a big number, and, and by running four hundred and twenty-one million, by running that program efficiently and doing what we can to cut, make sure that we're watching over our costs and savings, I, I think that we are doing that for our current facilities. We're planning out the, the multiple new high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools to address that, and I don't think we're delaying the building of those by phasing it in, in possibly twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. I think that it's really hard for me to get behind something where we're going to spend and go for a, a huge bond issue that addresses all of our needs at once, because we get such pushback from the public, and there's no more public oversight if they give us all the money at once. If we do this in a phased process, there's still a lot of oversight, public comment, and we have to make sure that we're running the program effectively and doing the projects that we said we were gonna do. And so it, it provides some oversight by the public by doing a phased-in approach as well. I think that, you know, the air conditioning, I think, is a huge thing for those schools. You start to get discouraged for those schools that continue to get overlooked and building up new schools in different parts of town, where, yes, we have capacity issues, but you're probably creating some of that because you're not taking care of the facilities in certain areas, so kids and parents are opting out of their home district area and going into the newer buildings. For instance, in my dis, sub-district, you've got Beverage that's on this list to be renovated, but a lot of parents are already sending their kids to Buffett and to Davis because of Beverage's lack of, of facilities, not, not the programs or the, the teachers and staff that are in there, but just because of the facilities. And I think that this is, while our needs are great, we have to start somewhere, and I think this is a responsible starting point. And yes, Phase Two isn't guaranteed, but it's something that we're starting to plan for the future while we're taking care of our current facilities. So I think, I really appreciate you guys for working with the board and and the community. I think this is a, is a solid plan moving forward, and I think it's, it's responsible to the taxpayers.
So I, I want to thank you for your presentation today. It's really hard to sit here as a new board, knowing that we've inherited this fifteen-year buildup of all these facility needs, and I think that's the part that is overlooked, and it's, we're doing the best that we can do to make sure that we're getting the basic schools, I mean, the basic needs taken care of first, but we're also looking at capacity, and that is important, and that's, those are hard decisions to make. But it, you know, we've, I think we've all lost a little bit of sleep and, and a lot of bit of sleep, but this, this, these are hard decisions to make. I know I've had lots of questions, you know, about, well, I, I hear both, you guys should just go big, and, and then I hear, well, no, we don't want to pay this extra, and at the end of the day, my focus is, yes, we are responsible to those taxpayers, but we are here for those students, and to walk into those, some of the buildings and to see the need, you know, I can walk into one of the buildings that I represent, and there is AC there, you know, and it's just a, a difficult situation for students to learn when they're in a building that hasn't had any renovations or hasn't had any updates in quite a while. And so I, I'm hoping that we are at a point that we can start to figure that, is, is this what's gonna work for us and to get those buildings, and the public is going to accept that, and to start building up some support for what we're doing, because we've put in a lot of work. We've put in a lot of time trying to rehash this number and, and do the best for the students and for our taxpayers. I have a question. I know we haven't really had an updated timeline for the projects, so I'll be looking for that, so I guess that was more of a ask. And then my question is, how long is the estimated renovation for Benson's, I'm gonna state this, so it's not, it's a career tech ed program. What's the timeline? How, how long is that gonna take?
Um...
I can't remember, I don't have the old thing in front of me.
The, the way we've looked at the phasing of the projects is we've developed some sort of standard timelines, if you will, so for instance, a new elementary school, or an elementary school renovation up to a certain dollar amount, we've built some timeframes to say, here's, here's how long the planning is gonna take, here's how long procurement, here's how long construction, and here's how long activation would take. And so we, we've built those sort of as standard timetables. The one that falls a little bit outside that is Benson, because we don't know the exact scope of what the career technical program would look like. The other, the other thing I would, I would say is that, you know, the board and the curriculum department and other people are gonna obviously be heavily involved, as well as the public, in determining what that, what that scope would look like, and so without defining what the scope is and what the programs are gonna be, I wish I could give you a great answer, but I don't know, quite honestly.
I mean, I guess I ask that question because we're talking about capacity at many, a couple of the high schools, and this is a program that I think will relieve some of the capacity, and it's also a newer program that, you know, the point is to draw those students that have the interest in this area, and, and even, even from other districts. I mean, I think we have the opportunity to do something really special with Benson, and I don't negate the fact that there's the need in South and West, but there's an, there's an awesome opportunity at Benson. And again, it will relieve some of those capacity issues, but, and I, for me, that's gonna be a priority school to look at, to get prepared for that.
And, and if, if the board can, can give direction to Jacobs, we can certainly work through very specific schedules and phasing. Doing renovations like that in an existing facility are sometimes very difficult. A lot of times, we can do major renovations in the summers if we plan ahead, so once we get some direction, you know, from the district about what needs to go on in there, we can give you a, a more specific kind of a timeline. It's, it's probably, I'm not even gonna say.
Don't put your foot in your mouth. Thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem.
Any other comments? Mr. Vargas.
I realize I didn't get a chance to thank you for all the work that you put into this.
You are all very welcome, you've all been very gracious, and, and, and I didn't specifically acknowledge everyone, but I, I do appreciate all of the, the hard work of, of the board, of the superintendent. District staff has really done kind of a yeoman's job behind the scenes, getting us a lot of the information, and continues to on a, on a daily basis, so thank you to all of you.
Yes, it's, it's been quite the undertaking for many people, that, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that people don't know about, and I think that it's just important to call out, and I, I just wanted to react to something that Ms. Gadding mentioned, that, you know, this is all very hard, because I think at times we are pitting ourselves against, you know, what are the unique needs of the whole district versus what are the unique needs of our, of, of our sub-districts and our areas, and it makes it really difficult. And, you know, as we were talking about this, I still, I still want to make sure that we are thinking about the greater impact for students that, that Ms. Williams mentioned. I think that's really important. And the utilization piece, and so the overcapacity piece still speaks to me, and I'm, I just, because today I went to a few schools in, in my district, and seeing them overcapacity, I, I was envisioning, extrapolating in my mind what the life of these little elementary schools in South Omaha and middle, and middle schools are gonna look like when they're already currently overcapacity. And also, given that I'm seeing fifteen to twenty students registering on a given day, just this day, I'm thinking to myself, how are, are we thinking about how, how this is gonna impact those schools? I think we are, which makes this decision very difficult. Just hope the public really realizes that this is not an easy decision, because we are thinking about the current needs of our district, both the ones that are not yet at where they should be, the different schools, and also the ones that are just bursting at the seams in, in desperate need, and I, I, I'm thinking of different areas, and I, I think of South Omaha, I think of many other schools, but I know my district, and I'm thinking of that. But it is hard for us, and I don't want that to go unspoken, unsaid.
Ms. Williams.
I just have to recognize the two, the two young people that are in this room, full of adults, talking about their education, my daughter and her friend. I just have to recognize the two, the two young people that are in this room full of adults talking about their education, my daughter and her friend. And it's important, don't everybody turn around and look at them, I'll get yelled at in the car. But it is important, even the conversation, the students are noticing it, you know, when they're coming, you know, they're in the office and they're talking about, seems like there's so many more students this year and they're noticing it. And so, at the end of the day, we're a bunch of adults making decisions that we think it's best. But I think we, we are, we have to remember that those young people are why we're here and to make sure that we're doing them due diligence and, and not forgetting that part. Because at the end of the day, yes, we're making decisions and, you know, there's input from so many people, but we have to remember that their input is important and that this is why we're all here to do the work. So, and hello, Brianna and Jada.
Any other, Mrs. Fay?
Yeah, I think that Mr. Vargas and Mr. Scanlon hit on, said a couple of things that really resonated with me in that. Just what Tony was saying about balancing what's important in our own sub-districts with what's important to the whole district and to all fifty thousand, fifty-one thousand students that we represent collectively. And that's difficult at best. And I hope that however, whatever decision, whatever ends up on a ballot, I hope that the, just as Yolanda said, the public will take that into consideration that just like in your own family, your own friends, you know, everybody has, prioritizes different, different things. You make different choices as far as how you're going to spend the family's budget, you know, whether you're going to take a vacation or not, or go out to eat or not, I mean, you know, or basic things. You're going to paint the house this year or you're going to, you know, put on a new roof. I mean, you have to make these decisions and they're hard because so many things are important. It's all important. And that's something I want people to understand that there's over a billion dollars worth of important things. And the trick is for nine people to come up with a list that we can agree on what's most important right now or what's the biggest priority right now. So, I, I hope that whatever happens, as we move forward and put something on the ballot for November, that the public will remember that there's fifty-one thousand children. And that, I think, you know, collectively, we're going to be supportive of whatever that ends up being on that, on the ballot. I hope we will. I think that's where it will be, so, however that looks. But I want to thank my colleagues because it has been a lot of time and it's been hard. And so, I really do thank them for the time and the thoughtfulness, as well as the staff and, and Jacobs as well for providing us with the tools and the information that we needed to have this really serious discussion at this time. So, I do want to thank, take a moment publicly to thank you all for the thoughtful, intelligent discussions that we've had over this and the superintendent too. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I guess I'll make mine. I want to thank everybody for their feedback and believe me, we've got a lot of feedback from the beginning of this process of one point one million dollars, or one point one billion dollars to six eighty-three and to the options presented today for the board. And we are answering the question that was posed to us to look at every option. And this is one more option coming before us. And I do kind of want to talk a little bit about this option. If this was easy, as our colleague said, everybody would get everything they want in Phase One. But this is a very difficult decision. We have limited resources and the fact of the matter is we're dealing with things that are outside of our control with other things going on in the cities and that our taxpayers are dealing with. We had over twenty-something meetings just between the board with work sessions. We had another ten or fifteen with steering committee and community engagement. We had online surveys. This was a, a heavy process. And how I look at Phase One is kind of strengthening our core while preparing for our future. We're doing the best to address the needs of all of our district, but we want to make sure that, and we want to make sure they're in first-class buildings. But let's face it, we have a lot of buildings that need improvement. We have some that are, quite honestly, in awful conditions. And despite all that, despite the factors of malfunctioning air conditioning, leaking roofs, crumbling walls, internet not being available in their classroom when it sometimes should be, despite all that, our district is moving in the right direction. We have a graduation rate at an all-time high. We have a dropout rate that is very low, one of the lowest that I've ever seen in I've lived here my whole life. Our scores are increasing and our achievement gap is closing. And when I ran for the school board four years ago, I ran on moving OPS from good to great. And that's exactly what this plan is doing. We adopted a strategic plan that I, we've all talked about over and over, and now we're trying to adopt a capital plan. That's never been done in this district that I can recall. And so, we are on the right track and we're moving in the right direction. And for those who are listening or are going to watch this later, let's talk a little bit about the fiscal impact of this plan. We're talking sixty dollars for a hundred dollar, for a hundred thousand dollar household. For those who drive a truck, that's less than what you'll put in for gas in one tank. For those who drive smaller cars, that's roughly two gas tanks to make sure our schools and our kids are living in twenty, or being educated in twenty-first century schools and in a safe and secure environment. This is about strengthening our core and preparing for the future. This is very fiscally responsible by breaking this up and doing it over a two-phased approach. When I look at Phase Two, I look about this as investing for our future. And I'm committing that if we are successful at Phase One, we have to be successful at Phase Two. And I'm committing that in three to four years, we will have another referendum because I'll hopefully still be on the board. So, again, this is about preparing our students for today, but also in investing our future and strengthening our core. So, when I look at this overall package, I think this is about moving OPS from good to great by building academic excellence in twenty-first century schools. And that's what this is about, making sure every student, no matter where they're at, have a twenty-first century school and we, we're able to provide academic excellence to all of them. And yes, not everybody's going to get their needs met today, but it's this board's job to lay out a plan to make sure in the eight years, all of our students, fifty-one thousand of them, I will say fifty-six thousand of them, because that's probably where we're going to be at, step foot in a twenty-first century school and all their needs are met. And that's why I like this plan and I'm endorsing this plan the way it's laid out. Any other questions, comments or suggestions? Hearing none, I want to let the public know this will be on the agenda again Monday. And the reason we presented it today is because we know we're on a time crunch and we asked Jacobs to bring back another option. But like with all of our options, we want feedback. So, we'll be on the agenda for Monday. However, the board is not going to vote on it on Monday because we still want to get feedback. We want to make sure when we vote on this, every board member has input of the community, their voters and their kids to make sure we get all of the feedback to make sure we can make an informed decision. So, with that, I will adjourn the meeting at six thirty-three P.M.